I'm not touching it.
That's exactly why it's a tragedy.
So that's why the store park. And we have it. Well, yeah.
This council meeting is called to order in accordance with the open public meetings law. This council meeting of September 18, 2023 was included in the list of meetings published in the Curry News and Star Leisure. A notice of this meeting is also placed on the bulletin board at Borough Hall and announced on the Borough's website. A copy of this notice is available to the public. A copy of this statement shall be included in the minutes of the meeting. Mayor Anna Sullivan.
Here.
Council members. Graham Boebreid.
Here.
Tom Mitchell.
Here.
Tina Stravic.
Here.
Roger Vroom is excused this evening. Randy Pez.
Here. You stand and join me in the platform.
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Council members Graham Boebreid.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Tina Stravic.
Yes.
Randy Pez.
Yes. Our next item is the selection of a council member as per the vacancy law established by the state of New Jersey with the resignation of Councilman Wee several meetings ago. The process is put in place for nominations. The council conducted interviews at our executive session, and I will call upon at this point Councilman Mitchell for a motion.
I move to nominate Teresa Bonner to be the interim councilperson.
Second that.
Any discussion? Well, okay.
Council members Graham Boebreid.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Tina Stravic.
Yes.
Randy Pez.
Yes. Kevin, you prepared to administer the oath?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Bonner, you will come forward and have someone hold the Bible.
She's not holding the Bible. She's going to do an affirmation.
Affirmation. Thank you.
It's right here. She's going to raise her right hand. Right hand. Over here. You're testing me. I see where this is going to go. You're going to repeat after me. I say your name.
I Teresa Bonner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of councilwoman.
All the duties of councilwoman.
For the Borough of Somerville.
For the Borough of Somerville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're thrilled to be working with you for at least this interim period. This office expires on December 31st at midnight of the year 2023. So welcome.
Thank you so much.
For the public, I would just like to say the council had a difficult choice of several highly, highly qualified individuals, which is a testament to the type of community we have that produces people willing to step forward and join us in this body. And if you look at the wall, it reads like a who's who of our community. Some of whom are in the audience for that. It's my two predecessors here, the three Irish mayors. It's sort of a rock roof that's rather should never attempt this thing.
Two of them were behind.
It's again, it's a, it just shows that when there's a need, our community steps forward. And this is yet another example of that. So wish you success. Please feel free to lean on us as well as Borough staff as you have a crash course in civics.
I definitely will. Thank you.
And anything we can do to support you, just let your president know. We'll wrap up that. Right, departmental reports and notices are listed. We have one presentation tonight with members of the DSA who have had an ongoing discussion on the streetscape redesign for our Main Street corridor with several public informational sessions to gather input from a variety per session of the community. And they're going to give us an update on recent developments and then next steps. So I will turn it over to Mr. Cohen and Ms. Panero to help us see where we are and where
Is this the last meeting?
Could this be very open?
So good evening, everyone. First and foremost, congratulations, Teresa. We will certainly miss you on the DSA Board of Trustees, but.
See, only that was my only trepidation about moving into this position.
Teresa's been such an asset and was involved as a part of this process. So first and foremost, again, thank you for allowing me to present on our most recent streetscape capital plan, which the DSA Board adopted at our last meeting. We're very excited to really take this conceptual plan and bring it to reality. I think one of the things that we realized during the pandemic, right, was that our outdoor space means so much to the vitality of our district and to the survival of our business community. And so whether that is expanding the streets for outdoor dining, whether that's having a clean, safe, and walkable district that will encourage people to come out and shop. The streetscape, right, is the lifeblood of our district. It gives us space to host our unique and world-class events, and it allows us and our neighbors to connect with each other. And we were truly fortunate to work with Arterial Streets, who was our consultant during this entire process. They are an award-winning design studio and have done work in communities like Milburn, Short Hills. They've done work in Union and Springfield Avenue, and they've done work in Bloomfield and Montclair. You name it, they've been there. So I wanted to do a quick overview before we jump in to the meat and potatoes of the presentation and talk a little bit about our process. So believe it or not, for those of you who attended our streetscape sessions, our feedback sessions, we started this process back in October of 2022. We started out doing some data collection, and I want to turn it over to Mike to talk a little bit about what that outreach process looked like and how we made it to the adoption phase right now in 2023.
So when we hired the consultant, we made it as our top priority that the plan will be driven based on community input. So it's very, very important that we do a very, very thorough public outreach process in a way that we collectively agreed. People may not like the plan, but we don't want them to say we didn't ask for their input into it. So we kind of made that our top priority. In fact, that's one of the reasons we hired Arterial, because they specialize in precisely that kind of public input. So the premise was that Somerville downtown had been doing well, and we got to the point where we were getting statewide recognition. So the real question was, rather than rest on our laurels, how do we take our downtown to the next level? And as Natalie said, it comes down to that downtown Main Street experience. Main Street, Somerville is a very, very complicated piece of rural state. My favorite saying, the only more complicated is a war zone or a New York City construction zone. There's a lot of competing interest on that street. So figuring out how to navigate that required, again, a very thorough, we needed a good consultant, which we got, and again, a process that was open so that when we came up with some strategies on how to take it to the next level, it was coming, it was organic, that it was coming from our guts, from our heart, very Somerville. And as opposed to some outside consultant telling us what we should do. So that's basically the process, a lot of outreach. And then culminated, of course, in the public open house, where we literally invited people to help draft the plan and.
So just to give you guys a little bit of insight as to the data that we collected, and again, the full plan will be available on our website, and so you guys can feel free to download the plan and peruse all of the appendices, because that is where all the data collection can be found. So some of the key findings from our data collection were some concerns regarding traffic calming and pedestrian safety, concerns about understated wave finding and signage, sidewalks that are being narrowed by outdoor dining and large tree pits, existing public spaces that we have not quite meeting the demand, a lack of bicycle infrastructure, and streetscape furniture and materials that are ending their lifespan. So with that, what we ended up doing was we looked at our infrastructure, right, from the perspective of people first or place first to mobility first or car first. So how streets are designed, furnished, and maintained depend largely on their overall intended use. So we need to think about, is the street a major thoroughfare that connects trucks, buses, and cars between cities, or is it a main shopping street in a small downtown? So ideally, a successful street reinforces its intended use with the appropriate infrastructure. So each of downtown Somerville's streets falls somewhere along the continuum between people or place first, mobility first, and car first scale. So people-first streets prioritize characteristics like public spaces, outdoor seating, and pedestrian amenities in order to maximize the comfort and overall experience for people as they're walking or biking. When we look at mobility first, mobility-first streets prioritize the movement of people, cars, and public transportation with established infrastructure that supports each transportation choice. And then lastly, the car-first streets prioritize movement of goods, cars, and buses with infrastructure that allows for infrequent stopping and starting. So our project team began by assessing the overall intended use for downtown Somerville street network. And this analysis, in addition to community input, served as the basis for recommendations put forth for streets within the designated project area. So the streets with the largest transformations are those with characteristics that really didn't support the intended use. So after we did our walkthrough, our high-performance streets analysis, what we found is that we were really somewhere along this continuum, oops, sorry, between mobility first and place first, leaning a little bit more towards mobility. So our intention was to move the needle with this plan, right, to go a little bit more towards place first. So those are the kind of the definitions, right, that we're working with when we talk about place or people first, and mobility first, and cars first. And then the second key factor for a successful street is performance, right? So we looked at things like functionality, how well they accommodate arts and culture, how well they accommodate health and the environment, economic vitality, and the quality of the design of the streets and the furnishings that we find on it. So what we came up with was three key moves along with, I'm sorry, three major strategies with subsequent key moves. So the first strategy that we talked about is reorganizing the streetscape to maximize sidewalk space. And so what we'll find in the next couple of slides is a look at these key moves in a little bit more detail. So first, we talked about reorganizing street furniture and amenities within the sidewalk on Main Street to make it more walkable. We talked about extending sidewalks at corners where parking is currently not permitted, creating sidewalk extensions at mid-block crossings and offset intersections, developing the Division Street intersection as a pedestrian intersection, developing better off fresco dining regulations, and reconstructing tree pits and developing a five-year street tree replacement strategy. So when we look at the concept of reorganizing our streets, we know that a variety of people, uses, and amenities are currently fighting it out downtown on our sidewalks. And we can maximize the space by expanding sidewalks where needed, reorganizing key elements, and creating a dedicated space for each use. So the next slide shows a reorganization diagram to identify locations of various improvements. So we really start off with looking at the way the streets are organized, and we break it up into four distinct zones. So the sidewalk, again, should be organized, the recommendation was that our sidewalks be organized into four zones, and the structure will help organize the sidewalk and create dedicated space for the primary uses that are outlined right here to the right. So the dimensions shown on the sidewalk zones diagram represent the sidewalks between West Main Street and Bridge Street. So looking at the corners, the frontage zones, the clear zone, and the amenity zone, right, we're creating areas, and we already do have a loose identification of these areas and where things should go, but this really formalizes where the amenities should be. So looking at our trash cans, our benches, right, those are going to be closer to the curb, with a clear zone going right down the middle in Zone 2, with our outdoor dining going in Phase Zone 3, and then keeping our corners, Zone 1, free and clear, and supporting those corners with bump outs where appropriate, as well as traffic calming features, right, like green infrastructure. So we talked about creating a safe zone within our corners. So sidewalks and curbs, the recommendation, were that they be extended into the parking lane at any corners where parking is not permitted. So extending the sidewalk at the corners allows for more sidewalk space that can be used for street trees, green infrastructure, and seating. Corner bump outs also provide shorter and more visible pedestrian crossings. So additional recommendations included extending the sidewalk six feet into the parking lane where appropriate, placing furniture, planting, or other amenities strategically to funnel pedestrians to curb ramps. So what happens when you have this beautiful lush green infrastructure at the corner is that your pedestrians are less likely to walk directly onto the street from that section and instead walk all the way to the curb to the safe zone to cross. And also, the last recommendation was to keep the sidewalk immediately in front of the curb ramps, clear of furniture, plants, and other obstructions. So the next part of reorganizing the sidewalk is adding mid-block sidewalk extensions. So these should be provided at T intersections where parking is not currently permitted. So an example of that would be the corner of Division Street and Main Street. Extending the sidewalk at these locations is going to provide additional space for pedestrians, landscape and seating, while improving pedestrian safety at these crossings. So the intersection should be given additional attention to detail as a pedestrian crossing. And here, we're looking at a table intersection to give pedestrians priority, calm traffic, and further celebrate the important public space that in effect would be the intersection of Main Street and Division Street. So general recommendations include, again, extending the sidewalk into the parking lanes at T intersections where parking and loading are not permitted, placing furniture plantings or other amenities strategically to funnel pedestrians to those curb ramps, using plantings as a buffer along the edge of the extension to protect pedestrians and provide greenery, and keeping the sidewalk immediately in front of the curb ramps clear of all obstructions. So there are some additional recommendations specifically for Division Street. I won't get into those right now, but you guys can certainly check out the plan to look at those in further detail. So here is our favorite topic of conversation, our street trees and our tree pits. So we really wanted to stress the importance of green infrastructure with this plan. We actually really appreciated the input of the Environmental Commission. They were so diligent of responding, you know, towards responding to all of our emails, coming out to all of our public input events, and really putting together a robust collection of feedback during our feedback section. And particularly, a lot of the things that we were talking about were this green infrastructure and the trees. So when we look at the green infrastructure and the street trees, we know that the trees are an important part of the downtown Somerville experience. If you ask anyone who's not from town, they won't tell you what a pain in the butt they are. They'll tell you how gorgeous they are and how they provide wonderful shade on the street, and they provide a charm and a character that's very unique to Somerville. So we certainly wanted to maintain that character, but find a way for the trees to be a little bit less invasive to our sidewalks. And so that was the conversation that we had with Arterial. So their suggestion was to work with the Environmental Commission, right, to continue to look at the lifespan of those trees and to create a tree and green infrastructure strategy that would help us remove all of those tree pits and replace all of the trees within five years. So what you're seeing on the screen right now is a suggestion of how we would construct a newer, more efficient, greener tree pit. So they're suggesting a modular suspended pavement system with granite pavers and granite sets that also serve to brand the district. So we really want to reiterate a commitment to healthy trees, and we know that that's a long-term investment in the beauty, biodiversity, and character of downtown Somerville. So additional recommendations include the tree pits measuring four by eight and including a two-inch band of permeable pavers on either side. This configuration will leave a four-by-four square of exposed soil for mulching and planting. The modular suspended pavement system is a system beneath the sidewalk that supports the weight of paving and creates a protected space filled with soil for root growth. So again, the recommendation was that we worked with the Environmental Commission to further flesh out and implement this particular strategy. So now we're on to our second strategy, which quite frankly is my favorite, which is building upon and expanding the public spaces in our downtown district. So some of the key moves that we discussed in this particular strategy involved the use of modular furniture and amenities to support year-round programming on Division Street, converting Grove Street into a flexible street, designing Main Street as a flex street between Bridge and Grove, designing a new plaza at Borough Hall, redesigning the Giardina Walkway to activate the space with new lighting, furniture, and amenities, and installing lighting and signage in alleys and along sidewalks connecting to municipal parking So what you see on your screen right now is the public space network that we have. And I have to tell you, I'm a little annoyed that Arterial stole my concept. So when we first met, it's okay, I stole one of theirs. Their motto is "Streets That Do More," and I love that. So the initial conversation that we had, I talked about the intention to create a network of breadcrumbs, right, that, you know, in essence creates a journey for the patron of downtown Somerville, so that no matter where they are in the district, they have a unique experience, right? And so if I'm starting up at Borough Hall, which they are rebranding as the Town Green, I can, within a four-minute walk, make it down to the central part of the district where I'll experience the Giardina Walkway, then I'll experience Division Street, then I can experience the Courthouse Green, which will then take me into the Greenway Connection. So part of the issue that we've had in the downtown is that people love our dining So part of the issue that we've had in the downtown is that people love our dining, right? They love the restaurants that they're used to going to, they have a relationship with those business owners, and so they'll come into town, they'll grab a meal, right? And then they might walk to get an ice cream or a pastry, but then they're leaving. And so the question is, how do we maximize the amount of time that they're spending downtown? How do we get them to explore? How do we get them to experience new businesses, right? And so creating this network of public spaces where they can experience things like public art and experience a performance, a live performance, where they can experience, you know, where they can sit and read a book, right? Those are all things that we're trying to capture in this network of public spaces. So that network includes, again, Borough Hall, which they're rebranding as Town Green, the GRDNA walkway, Division Street, the Courthouse Green, which is being rebranded as Courthouse Square, and then that Greenway Connection. So I know it's a little tough to see on the screen, and so I'll try and point it out to you. But when we're looking at the GRDNA walkway, we know that this is downtown Somerville's, one of downtown Somerville's largest alleys, and it's an important connection for visitors between Lot Four and Main Street. So we want this space to reflect the character of Somerville and provide an informative welcome into the downtown. So some of the recommendations include installing an informational kiosk near the parking lot, locating fixed furniture throughout the walkway, identifying select locations removable furniture, installing better bike racks at, or near the parking lot, installing overhead entry signage at the Main Street entrance, thinning out vegetation but maintaining screening adjacent to, adjacent to the parking lots, and then working with Arts on Division and other arts-related organizations to incorporate, incorporate public art into the space. So I'll just point a couple things out to you, because I know it's a little difficult to see on the screen. But these greenish-blue panels that you see on the left-hand side are panels to display artwork. And so those orange canister-looking things and zigzags actually are overhead string lighting to provide better lighting within the walkway, installing pedestrian-scale lighting at regularly spaced intervals, so those are those orange canisters, removing the wooden railroad tie and plantings in that area, because we know that a lot of times we can't even get a watering truck into that alley, removing and replacing pavers, using updated materials palette, removing raised planter beds to accommodate furniture, working with local artists to install artwork and murals. Again, that large orange square or rectangle on the right-hand side would be for a mural, and then removing the overhead shade structure, which are those pergolas that we currently have. So those were some of the recommendations. General recommendations for the rest of our alleyways include upgrading lighting, providing seating opportunities where space allows, using potted plants, installing additional murals on blank walls where possible, and installing wayfinding signage at the end of each of the alleyways. So my favorite part of this particular section is building upon and expanding Division Street. So the way that Arterial broke this up is they basically broke it up into what they call rooms, right? And so when you look at the map that's on the top of the screen, right? We're starting from South Street on this far left-hand side, and then moving all the way to that elevated mid-block crossing, that would be the corner of Main Street and Division. So while Division Street has certainly been an exciting and welcome addition to downtown, we know that it's time to make a new round of enhancements, right? In order to maximize its potential. So today, the space is largely open, doesn't have any fixed seating elements or landscape, and this is great, right? During the warmer weather months, when we put out our bistro tables and our umbrellas, but during the cooler months, the space is left pretty much empty. Once the umbrellas and the tables come off the street, you can see a tumbleweed blow down Division Street. So the recommendations are to utilize large potted planters and unique sculptural seating to create a series of outdoor rooms within the space, each with its own character and purpose. So, and again, these are not closed-off rooms, right? We're just, we're breaking these up into sections. So the first is the performance section, right? This room anchors the west end of the street and should be kept largely open in order to accommodate events and performances. It should include flexible stage seating that can be used day-to-day for sitting, relaxing, or small gatherings, and then can be transformed into a stage during larger performances. Since this is a gateway, they are recommending that we consider putting some type of informational kiosk, because it is the side of the street that's closest to the train station and NJ Transit. Then we're looking at what they call the centerpiece. So this room is in the center of the space and should be used to draw people in. So we're going to be using elements like planters, sculptural seating, as well as sculpture and lighting to frame out this particular section. So then we're looking at the gathering space, which is this green section in the middle. So this is the room that flanks the centerpiece and are comfortable spaces for people to pass through, stop and relax, enjoy an outdoor meal. These spaces, these spaces should include, again, large planters with trees to provide shade and scale, as well as modular seating and ample space for outdoor dining and movable cafe tables. And then finally, we look at entry, right? And so this room is the main pedestrian gateway into the space and should be exciting and engaging to passersby. So here, we're going to use flexible sculptural furniture, lighting, information kiosks, and more to engage visitors and welcome them to Division Street. So an additional note is that we took into consideration the fire department's request to keep all furnishings on Division Street modular and movable. So none of the furnishings that go onto the street will physically be anchored into the street. So we're really excited, and again, you know, this is really a vision, right? It's a wish list of all of the things that we really want to see in the district. You know, we're excited to working out the finer details for each phase of this project together with Arterial, as well as with all of our stakeholder groups, to make sure that we're putting together a streetscape that not only is engaging and beautiful, right? But functional as well. So the next space that we're looking at is the Courthouse Green. And a lot of this space, particularly the Main Street space in front of the Courthouse lawn, was really conceptualized based on plans that are already in the works with DOT. So we're focusing primarily on Main Street and how it can be improved to create a more safe environment for pedestrians and a gathering space for the community. One of the things that we realized during our sculpture project that we put on the lawn this year was that if you build it, they will come, right? So in the many years that I've been here, the Courthouse lawn was severely underutilized. And it really didn't start to attract a lot of traffic until we started doing programming on the lawn. And so part of this plan involves continuing to evolve, right? The uses that we can use the Courthouse Green, or what they call the Courthouse Square, to continue to drive tourism and economic vitality to the district. So prior to our work with Arterial, DOT determined that the current configuration of Main Street between Bridge and Grove is unsafe, and worked with the borough to develop a concept plan, which originally included reverse-angle parking. So the plan illustrated here utilize the DOT plan as a basis and made modifications in order to maximize its benefit as a public space. So I know that reverse-angle parking is a hotly debated topic, but examples of successful reverse-angle parking can be found on Willow Avenue and Washington Street in Hoboken, on Broadway in Newark, and Broad Street in Bloomfield. And so the plan envisions Main Street as a gateway into downtown Somerville that can be closed during events and transformed into a public plaza. So some of the recommendations for improvements right here on this section of Main Street include treating Main Street between Bridge and Grove as a flexible street that can be closed for events, bumping out corners to reduce crossing distances and increase pedestrian visibility, tightening the radius at the northwest corner of Main Street and Grove to shorten crossing distance, install street trees on both sides of the street to provide shade, utilizing those street trees strategically, utilizing tinted concrete within the roadway in order to calm traffic and create a suitable and inviting space for events and programming, converting that angled parking on the south side of the street into parallel parking. So that would be the side of the street that is where BURB is. And then finally, installing a center median east of Grove Street to calm traffic, provide pedestrian refuge, and create a visual gateway to downtown. So finally, we talk about Borough Hall. And while this is very much conceptual and further research is needed before we move forward with any of these plans, one of the things that we noticed is that the downtown district is devoid of gateway signage, right? And so while we have naturally built-in gateways into the district, like Borough Hall, there's nothing that invites you to come and utilize that space as a public space. So we, we consider this the western bookend and gateway into downtown Somerville. So again, it's an underutilized green space, and it has potential to become a great space for community use. However, it's currently difficult to access and isolated, separated from the downtown by wide, busy roads. So we like to reimagine this area to achieve the goals of the Somerville Master Plan and achieve the goal of the downtown Somerville Strategic Plan. If treated properly, this space can really be transformed into the Town Green for downtown Somerville. So the recommendations include converting the driveway from West End Avenue to a slow-speed street that continues through the Somerset. This proposed street will provide a proper front door to the municipal building and improve access to the green. Eliminate existing slip lane at the east end of Green, of the Green, and absorb the Triangle Island into the new public space. Provide safe and visible pedestrian access to the Town Green by introducing curb extensions and high-visibility crosswalks on West End Avenue and Somerset Street. Relocating the memorial to create a gateway into downtown. Selectively clear unwanted vegetation and replant with healthy, functional vegetation and trees, and to create a large central lawn for events and passive use. So again, this concept requires further development prior to implementation, and we will be utilizing a traffic study to, before we engage in any further action with this particular part of the plan. So when you see our phasing diagram at the end, this is actually the last portion of the Somerville, the downtown Somerville Streetscape Plan. And so our final strategy is reinforcing the identity and brand of downtown Somerville. Looking at those key moves, we're talking about developing a consistent furniture and materials palette that appropriately reflects Somerville's history and brand, installing information kiosks at key places in the downtown, installing public art throughout the downtown, and establishing gateways at each end of the downtown and train station. So we talked about that materials palette. One of the, some of the feedback that we get from a lot of property owners, as well as most recently, the gentleman who's doing our tree program this year, is that the pavers that we currently have are outdated, they're hard to come by, and there's much better products on the market to utilize. So we developed this palette with the steering committee and really put this together to provide a basis for the development of more prescriptive design guidelines. It's understood that there is currently a palette that is in place. The transition from the existing palette to the proposed palette and how the two integrate with one another will be studied before implementation. So what we're seeing here are key elements of the palette. So looking at the ground plane, we're talking about using natural and durable streetscape materials, including brick and tinted concrete. The cool gray tinted concrete should be the primary material with brick being used as a highlight along the curbs and at the corners. When we look at the style of the furniture, we wanted to find a median in the middle of contemporary and historic. And so we want to really be considered as a very modern place to be, and so we're looking at utilizing furniture, furnishings that use natural materials like wood and stone while being durable and easily maintained. As far as seating, we're using a combination of benches that have both a backed bench, as well as backless benches and cubed benches throughout the district. We'll be mixing those up, right? We don't want, we want places that folks can feel comfortable. And so if you're a senior citizen and you need a bench with a back, we'll have plenty of those downtown. But if you just want to take a quick stop to eat an ice cream cone, you can utilize one of our backless benches or use a cubed bench to hang out with friends. And then finally, we put together, you know, some basic bike racks that we would use on the side streets. And then as a nod to historic Somerville, we chose a very historic bollard, which is made of stone and really kind of reminds you of an old horse tie. So we talked about those gateways and how important they are to the identity of downtown Somerville. So we have one existing gateway at Main Street and at West End Avenue. The gateway is, this, the one that we're looking at is the proposed gateway over by Borough Hall. So we're looking at featuring a memorial, flag poles, as well as natural greenery. And the great gateway is reimagined to, again, achieve those goals of the Somerville Master Plan. So the recommendations are to redesign the West End Gateway so that it's more prominent and has better visibility when entering and leaving downtown, replace pavement materials to reflect that materials palette that we talked about earlier, and install, installing gateway signage that is keeping with the brand and aesthetic of downtown Somerville. So I'm really excited about the East End Gateway. So I think one of the things that we hear a lot about from our neighbors down on East Main Street is that, number one, there is not enough signage. Number two, there's nothing that signifies that you've entered downtown Somerville, and so people continue at a high velocity of East Main Street.
Let's take a moment on this one. This is my pet peeve. If you're coming in from the east, you're zooming up that road. And one of the reasons is you really don't have a visual clue that you're entering, you know, the middle of downtown, so you hit Grove Street going forty-five, whatever you're zooming at.
We have cut that speed limit to forty-five, I understand.
But I'm saying, what I'm saying is, the plan is calling for signals or, you know, design features that let you know that you've now entered downtown Somerville. So it's a visual clue, you know, there's an anchor or a gateway, signage.
Well, on that long stretch of East, East Main, there's a long stretch with basically only one traffic light.
Yeah, exactly.
Has there been any thought of eliminated crosswalks, you know, push-to-walk, push-to-walk, crosswalks?
I, I don't think that was consideration for this plan in particular, but it's certainly something. but it's certainly something that we could,
Yeah, that's true.
that we can think about in implementation, right? I think what's, so what you're looking at here is the corner of East Main Street and Park Avenue. And so what we were trying to do with this particular design is creating, is highlighting, right, and celebrating the Greenway as an important pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular node, and while also signifying that you're entering downtown Somerville while also providing a traffic calming feature. So the recommendation here was to redesign the East End Gateway as a key bicycle and pedestrian node connecting to the Greenway system and regional destinations, featuring and highlighting the Peters Brook Greenway to create a seamless pedestrian connection between the park system and downtown Somerville.
That's gold. That is gold. So you're downtown Somerville with access to one of the great natural features that this county has, which is the Raritan River. Yeah, Greenway. And this is the way to get to it.
Providing highly, high-visibility crosswalks across Main Street to ensure a safe connection, installing a quote "Somerville Gateway Sign" to match the gateway sign to be installed on West Main Street. Install Peters Brook Greenway and Raritan River Greenway totems that include maps of downtown and identify key downtown destinations. Walking and bicycling times to each destination should be included to encourage Greenway users to visit downtown and potentially include an additional totem at the connection of the two Greenways to highlight access to downtown Somerville. And then finally, we talk about wayfinding signage. So wayfinding seems to be, you know, a very popular topic of conversation. And so what we have here are just some basic recommendations for moving signage forward. So the fonts, colors, form, and size are meant to support the character of downtown Somerville, and as you can see in these renderings, they have a clear hierarchy. So the signs should follow standards set by manual on uniform traffic control devices and should be focused at destinations, parking areas, and along primary circulation routes like Main Street, Bridge Street, and Veterans Memorial Drive. We want to include bicycle and pedestrian wayfinding signs that list walking times as they're more relatable to people than distance. Existing and future regulatory signage should be clustered on single poles to avoid visual clutter. Wayfinding signage should include destinations on Main Street as well as regional destinations where appropriate. And then finally, maps included on kiosks or in other locations should be provided at a variety of scales to show local and regional destinations. Or the other option is to have digital kiosks that you can interact with and provide all of those different accessibility features. So one of the things that we were very happy to discover was that the Somerset County Business Partnership was seeking funding to provide digital kiosks in different places throughout Somerset County, and Somerville was a strong consideration to be one of the first locations to receive one.
And what will help us get that money? That plan? Because no other competitor, I suspect, can point to that documentation that we're talking about tonight. So one of the things this plan does is gives us a competitive advantage. Because I don't know of any other downtown using this area that has what we're looking at tonight. So when you have an opportunity like that for a grant, we can, we can use this as a great, great support to get that kind of outcome.
So what you're looking at, and this is our final slide, is a phasing diagram of how we plan to implement this plan. One of the things that we talked about with our arterial streets is if they could provide us with a list of grant opportunities that we would be able to apply for to fund these different phases. So Phase 1 would include Division Street and that tabled intersection at the corner of Division and Main. We chose this as Phase 1 because we really want a highly visible first phase, right? Something that is going to, I don't really have another word, but be like a sexy Phase 1. So it's
Low-hanging fruit.
Low-hanging fruit. So that was, that would be Phase 1 for us. And then extending out into East Main Street for Phases 2A, 2B, and Phase 3, which would go all the way out to Park Avenue, including those beautiful, that beautiful gateway signage and those totems. Picking back up Phase 4 on West Main Street, and then hopefully the Borough Hall being Phase 5. So at this time, I'll open up to questions or comments.
Nellie?
Yes?
The widening of the sidewalks, shortening of the crossing distances, how much constraint are we going to face given the fact that that's a DOT state highway? And that right-of-way extends probably into our existing sidewalks? So that's gonna, short of getting Main Street closed and getting Veterans Memorial Drive designated as Business 28, which is a whole other discussion, what, what are we going to need to do to convince DOT to let us build on their right-of-way?
So I think that's something to be seen, right? I think, I can't tell you, I mean, I'm sure we're gonna face some resistance from DOT. They have never been easy to work with. But one of the reasons why we worked, we chose to work with arterial streets is because they have a track record of working with DOT to get similar improvements approved. And so I don't think the question, I don't know that we'll get the exact plan as it is presented, approved by DOT, but do I think that we'll be able to get a variation of that plan? Absolutely. We've asked them, you know, on several occasions, right? Do you think that what we're putting forth is feasible? And they seem to think it is.
I'm just based on our experience to get them to put up a few 25 mph signs. That's a two years. So I'm hoping that there's gonna be a higher level of cooperation because it's valuable real estate and we need it for pedestrian use.
Right.
And I'm just, I'm trying to anticipate offering them alternatives. If we're gonna, if they're gonna give up, you know, some use of 28 or we've got a road, you know, 100 yards to the south was designed as a bypass.
Certainly.
Maybe we incorporate, you know, some of that in discussions with our friends down in Trenton.
What we also remember when we had those wooden platforms that were extensions for diners during COVID, the DOT had a fit and we only had it for one year. We invested all that money in this and we can't use it for whatever reason. So I'm not too optimistic about DOT, to be honest with you. I did want to address the area, the only area that you have shown us that is in a redevelopment area is East Main Street. And I'm not saying you should reprioritize your plan, but it is hoped that there will be investors who will redevelop East Main Street.
Sure.
I know that's probably a very large hill to overcome, but if an investor comes in and redevelops East Main Street from the point where the car dealership and the pizza hut used to be halfway up, to what extent would the DSA be willing to work with the redeveloper to actually implement some of these projects? Because it seems to me that that's a good way as a public private partnership to get that done.
Absolutely.
Quickly, okay? I mean, the redeveloper will come in, he's gonna invest a lot of money, and then he wants to do certain things. It seems to me you want to do the same type of thing.
Yeah.
Because I'll be honest with you, from what I'm seeing, your gateway plan now is we've got some nice signs and it looks pretty trashy going up. I don't care how you look at it, it's pretty trashy.
Point taken. I think having this plan, this specific part of the plan, with some ideas of how to redevelop that area in town in a way that's not just for the developer's benefit, but for the community's benefit, I think it's great. And that's a win-win. And I'm a big fan, just that connection with Peters Brook. You know, making that out is fantastic. I think that would be another thing to talk about.
Well, just a couple of comments in terms of that, Mike. 2019, just before COVID, we completed a process I sat on the committee that Kathy Gnerf fostered at the Recreation Department with the National Park Service. They had got, they had done a grant and brought National Park Service people in to look at our parks, and it was a lot about connecting to downtown. So definitely we need the signage. Definitely, as Mike points out, it's a great connection to get people to bike and walk into our community and to use our parks, not that they don't already. But I think that's another piece that we have to look at as you involve this, is the minutes and report, the plan that came out of the National Park System grant work.
That's great. We should make it known.
Sure. Also, I know the Environmental Commission has been advocating for maintaining the trees. I'm sure we're happy to see that. How we do it, I think, speak on behalf of the Environmental Commission, we're a very resourceful group, we have a lot of knowledge, and we're happy to speak about tree variety, tree placement, and so on.
Yeah. Well, we, that green infrastructure phrase, that came from the department.
Yes.
So we've been tied in.
My third comment is, this is all great, but if we don't maintain things, right now we fail to, it doesn't get us anywhere. So, and I don't know how long this is gonna take, but I think we also need to direct some resources to maintenance right now.
Absolutely.
There are unsafe issues, talk about East Main Street part that makes it look so bad, and part of it is also not safe. There's bricks all over the place, holes all over the place. So I think a lot of those things need to be looked at. And we've had that conversation multiple times. So welcome the good work that you did and report to San Frisian.
Thank you so much, gentlemen. So Grant, to get back to your comment. So I think that we are, the phasing plan is a proposed phasing plan. We are not locked in to doing any one area before another. We elected Division Street to be our starting point because it is smack dab in the center of the district. And so we thought it would be a great point to start out on and kind of move east or west. But certainly if the opportunity provides itself to go east first, we would definitely be open.
So one of the nice parts of redevelopment is it can provide an incentive for us to incentivize the developer, the investor, as a condition for making this a better place. So I mean, I see this as a very good way as that public private partnership can go.
Yeah, and again, the developer would not be able to say that this is something arbitrary that we pulled out of the scut. No, this is a long process that we went through that we can document, that this ties in what the community is looking for. And I think gives us, you know, better elaboration.
Mr. Mitchell, any questions or comments?
I mean, I've watched this unfold from the very beginning, from the first discussions about it and bringing it to Somerville. And I think that it's remarkable how so much research has been done. And you spoke to the community, you had open meetings, you got the viewpoints from lots of different places. You talked to the Environmental Commission. And, you know, I've supported it from the beginning. And obviously, we're not going to get everything that's on there.
No, well, maybe.
And it's going to take years. But I think that having a positive vision for the future of the town is wonderful, and I'm working towards that. And so.
And we're hoping that, you know, with some of the existing development that's happening right now, that we'll be able to, you know, hand this over and potentially, you know, have some of this implemented, right, as work, as work continues and unfolds.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, I just have a question. We have a couple of, a number of seasonal events that we hold in town and want to make sure that you've taken into these into account with the bump outs and planning and whatnot. We have the visit of Santa Claus to Division Street. The entire, the entire street is packed with people. We're not gonna be able to divide it into four rooms for that.
Yep.
And we have the Anderson Cooper Memorial Bicycle Tour of Somerville, which is a world-class criterion by the government.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So we want to make sure that those are taken into account.
So I think that
You mentioned St. Patrick's Day, too.
Yeah, and St. Patrick's Day, which is very
Of course, St. Patrick's.
So I think one of the beautiful things about the plan for Division Street is that all of the furnishings that we're planning on putting on Division Street are gonna be modular, and we're gonna be able to move those. So in the event that we do have a large-scale event like the Holiday Jubilee, there might be some pieces that we want to leave right out because they provide seating. But all of those ancillary pieces, we'll be able to move those out so that we can accommodate as many people as possible. And I think as far as the bike race is concerned, one of the things that we really had success with this year is that community zone that we did in front of the Courthouse lawn. And I think that the plan to convert that section of street into a flexible street is gonna enable us to not just accommodate the community zone, but to do so much more within that space as well. And so I don't think that any of the proposed plans will potentially impact the bike race negatively. I think they only have the potential to enhance, right, the street.
That would be lovely, to have a starting line, a starting line and finish line right there in front of the courthouse.
We would love to do something like that. So we will certainly continue to take those events into consideration.
So I want to thank the mayor and council. You know, one of the things, we might, it might stumble through about what the DSA is all about, I would start with the fact that we're a lot of things. But one of the things we are is a public private partnership. And it's only effective with a close relationship with the governing bodies. We appreciate that, and we appreciate Teresa. Congratulations. Sorry we missed you, but we do appreciate it.
I'm gonna miss you, I'm glad.
But, you know, I saw today of the news that Somerville was listed by some organization as
Most walkable cities.
Yeah, is that good timing? How about that? So, you know, the way I'll disclose my thoughts for tonight is that getting recognized today is having one of the most walkable downtowns out there. And we should do at least some of these goals that we talked about tonight. That walk, that walk through downtown Somerville on Main Street will be considered one of the most remarkable experiences out there, period, no matter where you are. And it's already great, but I think, you know, moving forward with this vision, I think we can make it fantastic.
Mr. President, last question or comment is for you.
Just comment. Being pleased on to the DSA, sitting on this board, owning a store downtown. I welcome this. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we go, I do just want to make a quick announcement unrelated to the Street State Plan. The Downtown Somerville Alliance has been awarded an Excellence in the Arts Award by Somerset County for the sculpture project on the Courthouse lawn. And our brand-new website also received the Silver Award in the Muse Creative Awards. So we're very excited to share that news with everyone and we'll certainly pass around information about the celebrations to come. So thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
John Thursday.
Tough act to follow, but we'll have committee reports and I will aggressively examine this honor tonight. What we do at this point in our meeting is report basically highlights of the six standing committees that it should be represented on. And Washington Network with Kevin over the next week or two to acclimate yourself into the world of public works. It will be leaf collection season, so that will
It will be leaf collection season, so that will, it'll be your task to have every single leaf off of all of our thirty-two miles of street. And you will be inundated with inquiries as to where the leaf trucks are. So welcome to, when, when I was first elected and Mr. Brady would remember, the winter of nineteen ninety-five, when we had three blizzards within a week, we depleted our public works budget. We were dumping snow into the river, which of course was not allowed, but there was literally no place else to put the snow. It was a crash course in providing services and then figuring out how to pay for it. So Public Works is an underappreciated function of the borough, but very necessary for the health and safety of our community. So I look forward to your instant immersion into the, into the world of trucks and equipment and our hard work improved out of the garage. Mr. Mitchell?
Okay. Mayor, I have, first of all, Somerset County is asking residents to register for Keep Somerset Moving Virtual Meeting on September twenty-eighth from six-thirty to eight. And this is to get feedback on county transportation policy. The NJTPA, that's the New Jersey Trans- Transportation something, and America Walks are offering grants for placemaking and walkable communities. And the Wallace House is presenting a one-woman show Sunday, September twenty-fourth at three P M about Haldia of Bohemia, who was shunned from society as a witch, but later went on to become a patriot hero of the Revolutionary War.
Thank you. Dr. Brady?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Gina and I met with Kevin and Paige as our first Finance Department meeting to attack, or tackle, I should say, the twenty-twenty-four budget. What we're going to recommend is that we, we limit our capital budget this coming year primarily to roads and those things for which we give grants. We do have some anticipated expenses next year. We don't want to be caught short. It is the goal of our committee to get the temporary budget pretty much up by the first part of the year because, as you know, that was the first three months or so where we worked that temporary budget. So we will continue to work on that. Our next step is to meet with department heads, selected department heads, to discuss what their particular situation is. And we're kind of hoping for a relatively flat budget this year. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Counsel, what?
The Environmental Commission has a E V car show October first in conjunction with the Street Fair and with, with our DSA. Also talk about public-private partnership. It should be really great. It's, lots of new things keep happening every week. So I know the county's going to be there in vehicles. We have private car owners there, dealership owners. So it's, it's going to be quite an event and quite a complement to what's going on in town. Also, on October eighth, the Environmental Commission will be in parlay with the Wallace House, Vandiver Chorus, the Girl Scouts, doing a, an event at the Wallace House, historical tree, tree-supported event at the, at the Wallace House. And then October twenty-first, we have a major sponsor that light, will be planting approximately thirty trees in town. If there's any volunteer groups that want to participate in helping to plant trees on, on October twenty-first and Friday, let me know. And lastly, their Environmental Commission, the Environmental Commission Green Team Gardens have almost completed their, their first real public year and is a great success at the J. Scott Memorial Community Gardens behind Firehouse, on Firehouse Field. So that's been a great addition, lots of enthusiasm and lots of community participation. And I think the next thing going on there is some Girl Scout badge programming regarding plants. So, so good stuff there. And then the Recreation Department, the Spray Park has closed. Spectacular event, another public partnership event, I think, on, on Main Street with the DSA. The Halloween event from three to six P M, that's Tuesday, October twenty-first. And then the Turkey Trot, we're gearing up for that on Thursday, November twenty-third, Thanksgiving Day, I guess. And so lots going on here in town, as always.
Thank you, Mr. President. After that great presentation by the DSA, I cannot follow that. Thank you. Couple of public events, but before I highlight those, I want to thank you, Mr. President, for bearing it so adamantly during my, my absence. It wasn't, the, the meetings were short and sweet and to the point. We've already, I think, tripled the combined meeting time of the last two meetings, probably because I'm back here in the, in the center seat. But thank you for, for pitching in and keeping the ship of state more than afloat. It's, it's well appreciated. We do have a couple of public events coming up on Grove Street tomorrow morning, sometime after eight A M. We're anticipating the delivery of the modular home being constructed by Habitat for Humanity. The project is designated for a veteran. We had the groundbreaking several months ago. And a lot of excitement in the second Habitat Home here in Somerville. Most people don't remember that back in around nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three, Habitat for Humanity Home was constructed on Second Street. It was an undersized lot that was so narrow, it did not lend itself to traditional development. Habitat worked with us and was owning the work to create a buildable lot there. And it's been a long time in coming for the second one. And again, it's, it's a veteran's designated home. So the street will be closed while the, while the, I guess the first floor will be brought in and I assume subsequent deliveries. If you've never seen a modular home, though, it's fascinating. So that's tomorrow morning. Friday morning, I'm invited to, and I think Council might have also been invited to Vandiver School. The students there have constructed a little lending library, similar to some of the pop-up libraries that you see on private property throughout the camp. That's at nine-thirty on Friday morning. It'll be fun for me to go back to, to my, my roots at Vandiver School. This past week, the school opening marked the fiftieth anniversary since nineteen ninety, nineteen seventy-three, when I first walked through the front door of Vandiver School as a, a young, energetic, starry-eyed, brand-new teacher with lots of hair. And I reflected the other day that the town has changed quite a bit in that fifty years. And, and my life situation has changed from a, from a New York commuter to, to the mayor of this fine borough. And it's, looking forward to going back to Vandiver and then looking at the efforts of the kids. I believe that they're going to recreate that project at the other schools as well. I think Vandiver is the prototype for that. This coming Sunday in Raritan, we are all invited to march in the Basilum Parade. The parade kicks off at one P M. Parking's kind of tight, so if you want to work out of carpool with each other or with me, let me know. There are times when I park at Walgreens and walk all the way over to the train station because it's, it's a challenge to find a place to park. But a very worthwhile, worthwhile event. And our Street Fair is coming back after a three-year hiatus, Sunday, March, Sunday, October first, from eleven to five on Main Street. We certainly encourage you to come out and not only visit the vendors, but visit our shops that hopefully will be open at the same time. The last thing I have on my committee reports, between now and our next meeting, we're finalizing the technical aspects of our sewer sale. Kevin, could you give me a very brief summary as to where we are? I think the original intent was to sign the contract on October first, but I understand there may be a slight delay in that.
I, I had meeting last week, October second is till the date. There was some delays, I shouldn't say delays, complications because of the passing of the chairman of the BPU. So, however, we did have our BPU hearing. Everything went well. And we're, we're scheduled now back on October second. We won't know officially until September twenty-seventh, so there's a, there's a small window, but, but the attorneys don't feel that it'll be lifted by the BPU. So October second should be the day.
Is there any action that we need to take as a council?
Yeah.
You've taken all the action.
That was a consideration at one point with the BPU decision and action related to the sale. But you're right, Chair passed and, you know, so you think everything is okay on track?
I think everything's okay. We, we do meet with New Jersey American Water and, and all representatives once a week. So as, as of last week, everything was good. There'll be certainly some outstanding small matters related to, you know, easements because, yeah, because municipality, you know, for, for, we don't generally give ourselves an easement, so we'll have to give easements to New Jersey American Water for, for where pipes lay underground on municipal property. So those things just have to be done, but, but the, the sale of the asset should take place on October second.
So the next sewer bill that residents will receive will be combined with their water, if I remember correctly?
It's combined, but, but it's separated, so you'll.
It'll be one-nailer with, but it'll be broken down into two, probably two separate checks as well. All right, so people should be on the lookout for that and we'll hopefully have more information by the middle of October because those bills will probably be hitting the last week in October for a November payment.
I think too, if you could put a communications director on that to make sure there's no confusion, make sure she gets it out with all our strength.
Because people will get their tax, you know, they got their tax coupons ready. They may be looking for their sewer bill. And it won't be coming from our department anymore. It'll be coming right from the water company. All right, that's all I have. So we have our open public meeting. I need a motion.
Council members, Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravert.
Yes.
Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Randy Peck.
Yes. Public session is open. Please approach, identify yourself, talk to me, and I will refer your questions to the appropriate person. Mr. Mack?
Hi, Frank McAlibee, one twenty-nine.
That's it, Mike, if you would like.
No. Hopefully I'm not going to be here that long. Grant split through the whole presentation. I give him a lot of credit. No, Frank McAlibee, one twenty-nine Bartine Street in Somerville. I'm here with a property maintenance issue. It was brought before the appropriate people back in February. It's for one twenty-three Bartine Street. The conditions of that property are just, it's like a garbage dump.
Is that two properties that are from you on the north side?
Yeah, and it's also adjacent to, not a house that I, I have. My one neighbor who has always planted gardens, he has rats based on the garbage and everything else that's left there. If you look at this house and you walk down the alley, you would not believe what it looks like. The, there's openings in the garage where animals can go in and out. It's a health hazard. The person that lives there feeds animals across the street on public plants. They leave old pie plates and crap. It looks like a disaster area. Now, this is seven months ago. They came down, they took pictures. Kevin was nice enough to look into it for me. He said they can't find out who owns it. Well, obviously somebody owns it. There's somebody living there. And I can't understand why the borough, and also Kevin said that he thought it was going to municipal court. But I don't believe that ever happened. Have there been any fines levied? Is the borough going to take any action to go in there and clean the place up, or do we have to live next to a dump like that?
Kevin, you know, the County Board of Health signed any of all of this?
It is a complicated matter. The, we've been at the property multiple times. There's violations issued against that property. The bank, the bank has not asserted themselves to take an action there. The woman there does suffer from health issues that.
So it is occupied?
It is, it is. It's a, it's complicated. I can certainly key, it's, it's going to be a court matter. But it's, this McAlibee's cracked that property. It looks terrible and it's not maintained.
Because we have a precedent. I believe last meeting we authorized a levy against the property owner for work that we did with Borough Resources.
And there'll be no, next meeting, a different property. But it, it does take a little bit. This, this property has become complicated.
The Board of Health is aware of and should have investigated because rats are public health and that's how our jurisdiction is for the health. So if they haven't been notified, if you want us to do it, we'll do it or whatever.
Yeah, no, they, they have. They have.
Because we have the same situation on Reimer, on Eastern, with the house that burned, and they've acted pretty quickly on that, so.
Is there any other reflection we need to take, Jeremy?
I think it's best if we wait and see the municipal court outcome. It is, I think we're kind of limited in what we can do or say. Probably in court actions pending. No, that's not a satisfactory answer.
Well, I mean, obviously we'll take that information and I could address, address the council tomorrow or, or Jeremy's status.
Well, if, if it comes to the form of Borough Resources, you need it, I would say, go ahead and then that's a hole in the track.
I, I don't have a file here, so I don't want to misspeak.
I'm pretty good at getting rid of rats. I don't know how. No, I, and I understand your frustration because you're living with it.
Yeah, it's been seven months. I spoke to, I, my, actually, I had my attorney lecture on June thirteenth about this because I don't want to go upstairs and talk to the guy that's in charge of COVID. Because he and I don't see eye to eye.
We had a similar situation on Cliff Street with the house that burned where the fatality occurred.
I don't see how anybody in Somerville should have to put up, I guess that house is fine when it's torn down, right? Is that correct?
On Eastern Avenue.
Eastern Avenue, that's more than raised.
Yes, Eastern was torn down.
And so actually, you take it on Cliff.
Madison, we took care of. We're going to be there again this week.
Kevin, if you would, if you would investigate with Longwood Jeremy where it stands and share with Mr. Mack, whatever, whatever we can at this point, with the understanding that it is probably going to be litigated at some point.
Thank you.
If we have to, if we have to, and it's appropriate for us to use Borough Resources to try and recoup it at some point, we'll do whatever the law allows us to do.
Well, I don't see how it really can even go the way it is. Obviously, you have a lot to go look at it is, but if I put my garbage all over the front of my house and never took it out to the curb till the garbage man took it up, picked it up, it's a disaster.
If you drive down Bartine Street, you won't even know that house is there. It's overgrown. It's overgrown. I thank you for your patience. Public comment. There are no other motions to close.
Council members, Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravert.
Yes.
Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Randy Peck.
Yes. Right, public session is closed. We have our consent resolutions. Are there any items?
We have a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do have one roll call. Resolution two eighty-three, accepting the twenty, twenty-two municipal audit, which you had a chance to review. There's a cover letter being circulated to attest to the fact that you have read and, I'm correct.
Councilman Bonner was saying, because she's here to see the order.
So may I have a motion on accepting the audit as a rule?
Second.
Any discussion? I'm not a hundred percent sure I agree with everything that was said, but, you know, I, I've always been of the, I have the impression that we have very good controls in-house. We just don't have a lot of people to control it. And I think the auditor was talking about entities with larger staffs as far as internal controls. Our internal controls are essentially with our own staff and with Edmund Sullivan. I can probably tell you at a moment's notice what was spent and how much revenue came in. They were talking about timeliness, how timely do you want it to be? I mean, we can get it, we can get something immediately. We don't publicize it. We're not giving out, so.
Your vote and signature only acknowledge that you received it and read, not that you agree with it.
Again, but that's something I've always been, been concerned about with audits. And, and it's been my experience that we look at the recommendations and try to implement them as appropriate. And we've had the same audit in front for a number of years. We're very well served. And we're very careful with the public funds to which we're entrusted.
The, the auditor made no recommendations or changes.
But that's the other thing. They said everything was a problem as well as anything.
Council members, Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravert.
Yes.
Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Yes. I'm saying, I'm saying, sorry.
Sorry, okay. Randy Bess?
Yes.
All right, now consent resolutions. Are there any for private discussion, or public discussion? All right, good. 284, authorizing our spectacular event. 285, authorizing the Turkey Truck. 286, a three-year contract award to Rogers Paving for snow plowing services to supplement a public works operation. 287, the execution of a shared services agreement with Raritan for a new program of, the shared service for our CFO. 288, contract with Millennium Communication Group for the, for IT with our new, I assume this is our public service equipment, the public safety equipment, Oberon, guess the name.
Right.
289, according to Kevin, a slip with the Municipal Alliance and New Services Commission. He already runs the meetings. It's only appropriate that we, we put him on as a, as a certified member. 290 is a new hire, seasonal rate of $17 an hour from Cody Schaper. 291, a contract to Valers for parking lot six improvements. Kevin, we have a timetable on, on those, a lot of things?
Yeah, they're going to do it this fall. So we have, we have to navigate around the tapestry. It's going to do their Oktoberfest and their parking lot. So we're going to have to navigate around that a little. It, it does involve three other private properties at the same time, but I think we should all, I think by the end of October.
The goal is to have an operational by the holiday shopping season. Good. 292, approving girls on the run race for November 19th at 11 o'clock. 293, authorizing the Marion Clerk to execute the Somerset County Community Development Block grant, sub-grant agreement for Carroll Patriot Park ADA expansion. 294, contract with Visual Computer Solutions to coordinate off-duty employment of police officers. And 295, accepting the award from MetLife for a tree grant of $18,750. Can I have a motion on those?
No move. Second.
Counselor members, Grandpa Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Randy Bess?
Yes.
Bills and dutch, that's right.
Okay, hold on to your seats. I would request and move to pay citizens vouchers in about $2,611,199.11. And that is my motion.
I assume that includes the quarterly payments to the school and that.
I.
Yeah. Okay. Roll call.
Counselor members, Grandpa Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yeah.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Randy Bess?
Yes.
Before I call for adjournment, once again, from my wife, myself, my family, just want to thank everybody with a tremendous outpouring of support for us over the last couple of weeks. It's been about six weeks since my daughter's untimely passing. And your, your, your love and your concerns has made it as easy as it could be. I'm just proud to live in Somerville. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Poursed. See you in two weeks.